Good afternoon. We are going to conduct a study session on Jerry Ivy Park Memorial, Jerry Ivy Memorial Park improvements. And I will turn the meeting over to Deputy City Manager Jacob Whit.
All right, Mayor Commissioners, this is a topic that we've had several conversations on over the last couple of months. Last time we spoke, we had engaged GBA to kind of do an overview of site plan and get this back in front of you so that we can get moving forward with the project. So I'm pretty quickly just going to turn it over to Jeff Hammond and let him take it from here.
Thank you, Jacob. As Jacob said, Jeff Hammond, Director of Parks and Recreation, and I'd like to introduce the gentleman to my left is Jim Schusler with GBA or George Butler Associates of Lenexa, Kansas, to present the design and design process and proposed preliminary design of the various elements of Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. How we got here, just quickly, I'll go through this pretty quickly, as we talked about, we have had several meetings relating to Jerry Ivy. After the demolition of Jerry Ivy Pond, staff conducted a visual preference survey and a community survey identified several design preferences of the water feature that indicated a preference for more natural concept of a water feature, a feature with flowing water and the use of natural stone. The study session, at a study session in October of last year, staff identified several objectives that we wanted to accomplish with the improvements at Jerry Ivy, including the updated memorial photo opportunities, renovation or upgrade of the current splash pad, destination lighting, incorporating a gazebo into the design, consider interactive and natural water components, landscaping improvements, and complementing the existing trail system. And then unfortunately, in April of this year, the splash pad at Jerry Ivy was found to have significant damage to its plumbing underground that sends water to all those features on that splash pad. And then just recently, August 12th of this year, the city commission approved the agreement with GBA for design engineering services for the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park improvements, for that splash pad, for the water feature, and for the memorial and site improvements. What we like from the city commission today is your feedback so GBA can move forward with the preparation of construction documents and meet that timeline that's in your packet that we provide at the end of the presentation. But without, I'd like to turn it over to Jim Schusler with GBA.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm a landscape architect, have been in the business for about 28 years, and this is definitely one of the highlights of my career, being able to work with you guys. I have been involved with this project for many years, maybe as many as three, with doing some of the water analysis from the previous Jerry Ivy pool or pond, and then creating the demolition drawings for that pond, and then the preference survey. And then here today to present recommended improvements. I probably have about 30-minute presentation, but I hope that you'll interrupt me throughout and ask questions so that's more of an informal dialogue, as Jeff said. The first few slides, the next slide, really kind of shows kind of a history of kind of where we've been. When we initially analyzed the site, after the preference study, we started looking at places for the memorial, places for the splash pad, how it could be increased connectivity to the park, to the surrounding areas, looking at the topography and really the views, sheds, and really that connection, and actually future planning of the park and how we could, by making some moves, really have opportunities even in the future for improvements within this park, whether it's a future sand volleyball, or restrooms, or playgrounds, et cetera. So the next slide really is what was presented to you in early August, which is the idea of the recommended site for a kind of splash pad that was located very closely adjacent to the gazebo. The gazebo is used for social, you know, very social media events, homecoming, photography, weddings, definitely accent to the community, something that's cherished, and really the opportunity to kind of work off of that site made some sense. We also have a memorial in its location, the idea that 200 people could be visiting this memorial once a year for that yearly occasion?
Yeah, the fallen police officers event in May.
Okay. In that, we looked at how connectivity throughout the park could be encouraged, what sidewalks are old, dilapidated, the existing or remaining walls, the concrete sandbag walls that exist at some locations, and kind of picked that, some of these centrally located sites, areas that are kind of shown here, as well some conceptual design for future weddings, or really continue to engage the gazebo. So that's kind of all shown as some of those concepts there. The next slide is really the further conceptualization. We continue to build and show you the history of kind of how this continues to progress with the idea of this combined but separated by a plaza, water wall, water feature for that backdrop, the social moments in time where we can definitely capture fun and enjoyment and the laughter that's so important to the park and its community. So again, letter E kind of represents the location of that water wall, D represents the location of the splash pad, all kind of represented together. We also were keen on how this would be set so you could have views from Ohio Street, so whether it's through evening light displays, or just the visibility from the neighboring roadway there into the park as an important aspect, but then working within the infrastructure that might be needed for sewer water, electricity, the location of those at both the gazebo and the restroom where the transformer is located. And then kind of building off, which is letter J, the idea of the memorial. There was a lot of conversation that the memorial needs to be separated from more of these active uses, but still have enough land for those 200-person gathering, fire trucks, and flags, and whatever else might be needed. So we continue to keep them separated by a distance and some land, but they also have great views of each of those across the site and enhance connectivity between those two with the path systems that are kind of shown there. Again, a loop and walk ability is very important to your community and to this park, and so having a variety of different loops and walk and pathways, perhaps at the different elevations, and provide great sightlines and allow for that expandability throughout that. The next slide continues the, our development of this. We're going to go into each of these areas in more detail, but again, start to show the splash pad and memorial and water wall really kind of coming together and what we're coining this preliminary development stage of work where we're at. You can see within this that, I drew it over the top of an aerial photograph, which previously had the lake still shown within it, but ultimately, that open lawn area can be used for recreation and then is directly tied to the paths and these new amenities provided to the city.
A quick question.
Yes, great.
This location of the splash pad versus where the existing pad was in the playground is quite a distance. Is there a reason for separating the splash pad from the playground?
So, it does, there's positives and negatives to it. One, the positive this location is literally utilizing the entire park. There's a, and it's not that great of a distance, perhaps a football field difference between the two, but allows the connectivity or the separation to have more of the park used. There's parking or additional parking in this location, so you can have a greater spread of parking or access to this site as well, so for walking distances. This is also close to a lot of utilities, that's important, works with the gazebo, and opens up land for a future larger playground, whether it's a destination playground or some of that, it really allows that space to be a future amenity land use in itself. There's a noise and a light and a visibility that this allows.
And there's additionally, there's also that bathroom on the south end, too, that would serve that splash pad as well.
Well, my thought is, is mothers losing track of kids. Where are they at? I think he's on the swings. And now he's, and my other concern is, say you've got a wedding or something going on, wouldn't that be a little disruptive having the splash pad in the wedding same time?
If the, I mean, you can, I'll take this one. In my mind, there's a, it doesn't look like here, but there's at least, what, 40, 50 feet of separation between what we would propose as the using the gazebo on the green space.
You're clear on the south side button up against the south into the park, right?
Right. If someone were to use that available green space north of the gazebo, I think there would be a somewhat of a separation between the splash pad, whether it be noise or visual. That's just my look at it.
Yeah. I guess my bigger concern is kids being from one end of the park to the other.
They're separate uses. There's also, you know, children wet, playing on equipment, there's safety, you know, wet people on play equipment as well. Many amusement parks still have the water side and the activity side, and they are separated because of uses. It is recreation and it allows them, the families to move from space to space within that. We, this does allow us to use the natural grade because it is built into that hillside a little bit, so we can create the, the water wall is actually part built into the hillside, and so that really makes a easier construction as opposed to just a blank wall on one side. This actually nicely tucks into the existing hillside pretty well. I, you know, I don't, I have not been told that there are formal weddings, but more informal weddings that occur in this environment, and so as a designer, we've provided the opportunity for lots of, you know, rentable uses and stuff like that, but we haven't necessarily designed it to be wedding only or wedding venue only kind of thing, but separation, we believe, is a positive thing, but I understand your point, Mayor. The next slide really starts to kind of blow up, blow into, and we're going to talk about the memorial first, which is the name of the park, the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. This is an old slide. What's the next slide look like? Okay, no, it's fine. I thought I did something different. Okay, thank you. Go back one, please. So there was a comment that there was a lot of landscaping, and if you saw the other plan, we removed some of the landscaping behind the memorial, so it was really visible from both sides. That might not have been picked up on my end, but the idea is that the memorial here would be set into the landscape, into the park, a little bit more than it currently shows, and is, and works with the one flag pole that exists right now, but adds two more flag poles to really give it a presence, puts those flag poles and those memorials into a paver plaza zone that connects to the parking and has kind of this landscape zone that really adds additional amenity and color to that. We did take the lawn. If you go back a slide, sir, thank you, you'll see how we, if you can hint, we brought the lawn into the backside of the memorial on the west side, so you could actually have good visibility from the memorial from both the west and the east side, but ultimately, we want the memorial to be inward facing instead of outward facing, and so really the, the event in May would be not in the street or in the, on the roads, but actually within the park and looking back towards the west. And so that was kind of an idea. So if you go back one more or forward, thank you, sir. So ultimately, those two black shapes that you see are really the shadow lines of both a proposed memorial and the existing rock that would be reused as an important element to the family, to the site, flanked with landscaping, that wall, that walk that pushes it into the park a little bit, allows it to be part of a kind of a circulation space. The plaza zone, as you can kind of see, is that hatch pattern and the three flag poles The script that is currently on the bronze language would be reused. Actually, I saw, and then go to the next slide, sir. It's interesting, I stopped in Junction City and I saw Veterans Memorial there at the gas station that was the same idea, this black onyx with this carved logo and information and a 3D scene that was imprinted within that, very close 45 minutes from here, but that same idea is what we're encouraging here. Maybe perhaps black onyx memorial could have a couple of the columns on either side as shown within this idea, you know, representing the institution and the formality of the police within this city, but ultimately, this could say the same thing as what's on the current memorial, but we could have Jerry Ivy etched at some size within it to represent kind of like one of his photographs, and then the poem that describes so eloquently that, you know, that America is worse today because of, you know, the loss of Mr. Officer Jerry Ivy, and, you know, how sad it is for his loss, which was, you know, written in a poem that is shown currently on the bronze, but could be etched into this black onyx idea, whether it has the badge, his badge, or the badge representing the police precinct here. But this was a concept, and so actually, I would like to pause for a second and get feedback on the memorial itself and maybe this idea of a new element. I guess the last slide, we want to go forward one slide, then come back. The idea that this would be in a plaza, it would be kind of a paver-style plaza that picks up the whites and the grays and the charcoals with the three flag poles representing a more solemn environment than the one flag pole you have now, could represent POWs, the Police Department District, or the city, or the state, or whatever you choose, but it would be uplit with lighting to represent your city well. So if you go, I'd love your input as a placeholder here before we move to the wall and the splash pads. So go back to the memorial, please. Thank you. Is there any thoughts you have?
Jerry Ivy.
Everyone's going to look to me. Personally, I mean, it's, the onyx is nice, looks too much to me like a tombstone, you know, in a cemetery. I really liked the original one, and it was, it's not as old as we thought. We did some research on it, and Jeff helped me out with it a little bit, but 2010 was when that was replaced and upgraded. Still not sure on the artist, I don't know if you confirmed that or not, but...
They're working on it, but they haven't confirmed it yet.
So that was kind of presented as an upgrade from the original one, which was put in in the 80s, which was much smaller, so I kind of prefer the original, if that could stay. I like, I like the cleaner look of the whole area. It just kind of occurred to me, turning around, though, with the backdrop of it being South High and a couple softball fields versus the backdrop of it used to be the pond and, you know, because you do, you look beyond it, especially during the memorial services, that's where the officers stand back there and do their 21-gun salute, and it's just, I don't know, for picture-taking opportunities and stuff like that, it would probably be better to see that in the background versus, of course, now that I keep thinking about it, they do put the fire trucks with the flags on the street side, too, so that could potentially block a lot of it out, so. Now, I just kind of talked myself out of both of those, but my main thing would be the memorial stone itself would be, I prefer that that stayed the same.
I guess the other reason I kind of like the memorial facing outward is that if someone is driving by, they can see what it is. Otherwise, it's, you've got to make a conscious decision, let me park the car, get out and walk around and see what that is. But I thought about the picture, the backdrop of the pictures. I think I'd rather see the park, and I love the school, but rather see the park than the school. I think you see the school just kind of blurring or drowning the memorial out in a picture.
If the city manager, myself, had some conversations late Friday about what if you entered the park and saw something that indicated that it was a memorial, I'm not sure exactly what that looked like, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Jim about it, but if something was entering off of Edwards there and not seeing the back of the stone, they can see something different to know that there was some type of presence there of the memorial, whether it be Jerry Ivy Memorial Park in block letters along the bottom on our stone face, or, I don't think we're arguing for one face or the other. I think both are good ideas. It just would allow for the room, for the event to be in the park and not in the roadway. That was our primary focus of designing it, or preliminarily designing it this way.
My brother and I had this conversation this weekend, but I think the memorial itself, or I'm sorry, the park itself is the memorial, it's the Memorial Park, and this is just a small part of it that kind of says why. You know, if it came down to dollars and cents, we would rather see the money put towards, you know, making the amenities better, the spray grounds better, or, you know, those kind of features better versus making this big elaborate memorial here, while it's nice that it's there, you know, and I do agree, it could be cleaned up to a lot of extent, you know, the refreshing, the landscaping and stuff like that, but in our eyes, it doesn't need to be a big elaborate deal there, because the park is and always has been the memorial to us, and this would just be where you would be directed to, you know, to read, you know, kind of why it's named that, so.
So I support, as a designer, your idea is 100%. So I'm just going to clarify for me some of the scope items that we're going to have like in agreement moving forward. We're going to leave the rock, and it's all of its prestigious beauty with the bronze attached to it. We're going to have it facing the school, so the park's in the backdrop. Do we want to move that rock more into the park? There's a great distance between the flag pole and the back of the memorial, and so I didn't know if you wanted to kind of collapse them together so that the flag pole is more connected to the rock. One, the question is, does two more flag poles for a total of three, is that a good idea, or? And then I have a few more questions, let's just tackle a couple at a time.
I also, I want to note to everyone up here that this isn't my decision, my decision alone.
I'd like to weigh in on the flag poles.
Obviously, you know, everyone's looking at me for obvious reasons, but I also want to hear the input of everyone else up here.
Two of our other parks, primary parks, Sunset and Oakdale, had three flag poles. And so I think that is kind of a standard that's set.
And I like the flag poles further back. I mean, if the flag poles are right behind your monument, there's nowhere in the world you're going to get them in the monument in the same picture. Plus, it's a nice backdrop to have it moved back.
Okay. I think as a designer, the flag poles are just in the lawn, and so I might want to put the three flag poles into some kind of paver zone or something like that, so like the mowers aren't going up right next to the base of the, and that the light is incorporated within, because it's like five feet off of the front. If we could incorporate that into a zone, that makes it easy to maintain, but also gives it presence.
And one other nice thing about having the participants for the program on the pavement is if it rains, that lawn is of no use to anyone in a wheelchair or wearing good shoes. And the officers have to stand in formation, I would imagine the pavement probably is easier than the grass.
And then the question of a plaza or paver zone where you could be connected to both the sidewalk from the parking bay to the south, parking bay to the north, as we kind of maybe go one way or the other, sir? I guess backwards, I'm sorry, backwards. So if we connected it, if we left it about where it is, but we connect it with a sidewalk from the parking to those locations, that could create a dry zone for you to stand on and read the rock and, but also connected to parking and part of the circulation of the park. Does that make sense to have a little bit of a plaza zone and have that, the memorial rock placed within that, with landscape going on either side?
Well, I'm definitely in favor of the paver plaza. You know, to me, just from an architectural standpoint, it gives more depth, and it delineates that area for this is the memorial area, and for the earlier point about, you know, standing in the rain and things getting wet, it's probably a better environment in that way as well, and accessibility is also brought up, very good point, but aesthetically, I just, I think it's, it definitely stands out in a very good way.
Before we make hard decisions, you know, there's not a lot of detail here. Would we be presented with a little more structure and detail?
I would anticipate having that for you when we are preparing to, I guess we can do that anytime when we have closer to construction documents, but once we have those construction documents ready to go, we're probably going to go to bid, but you will see it before that.
Mayor, you referenced, I don't know what specifically you're referencing that there was not a lot of detail to, can you elaborate, please?
Well, like how this is going to render and look when you put it all together.
So as Director Jeff was saying, this is, to get this up and running by May 1st, this is fast, like we're designing at light speed, and like we're going out to bid in 1st of November, so there's, there's one month to go from today to almost 100% CD. So we will, so unless you slow us down or move the... percent CD, so we will, so unless you slow us down or move the delivery date, that it, you, you're, there is a very small window that we will be, we hundred percent need your buy-in to go to bid, but it's fast.
I, I could give one example. The picture of the flagpoles is in a nice Kansas prairie, not at Jerry Ivy Park, I mean, just a rough idea of, you know, how tall the flagpoles are against the back, I don't know if you can superimpose flagpoles on a picture of the park?
Hundred percent, though, I'd photo oppose those in the Kansas landscape.
Kansas, okay.
Took it off of, uh, something else.
These, these pictures of the pavers, two of them, makes me think I'm looking at a pattern of a shingle roof.
Uh-huh. I understand, I a hundred percent wanna come back and present some ideas to you, um, but you're giving me great input and I appreciate we're gonna keep going with this, um, because then I am gonna provide you exactly what you asked for today, and that's my intent.
Okay.
So th- this is great, um.
So, you know, because of the tight timeline, I mean, really, the timeline is more connected, I think, to the splash pad than it is to the, to the memorial, so if, if there was something that we needed to separate out a little bit, maybe we could bring you more details about the approval of the memorial, but we really gotta have a decision and, and some push forward with what's going on with the splash pad and the wall today, because that's, I mean, we don't have three, four, five weeks, um, you know, to bring a concept plan and redesign it if we're gonna meet those timelines. So, so I guess that, that could be an option as we, you know, bring you something more on the memorial, but today, we really gotta have some decisions on the, on the other side.
Is Justin taking this project and breaking it down in phases?
I think we could, I think if you wanna have a lot more feedback and, and meet the timelines, I think that's probably the only way to do it.
I, I think we can make that decision, um, uh, in, with, in the month of October, whether we wanna delay or make two phases or not. Uh, I think I'm getting great feedback and, and can present what I think I've heard, and then if we, in, in the month, when we meet again in October, I don't know the dates, we say you, but yeah, maybe, you know, then, then we can make that decision at that time, uh, to either do two separate bid packages or have a, um, first phase and then a second phase, uh, that, that could be accomplished kind of thing. My, uh, last question about the, the, the memorial rock is, does, again, it's not drawing, could it be elevated a little bit as like in a, as a plinth or something so that it gives a little bit more, uh, ver- verticality, uh, so, um, maybe closer to eye level or whatever, just elevates it by a foot or more, but also gives it more, um, prowess, something for consideration as well. So.
How would you elevate it?
Well, so, I like the idea of having a paver zone. It's a different material than just your concretes that exist throughout the park. There's gonna be plenty of concretes, and so the paver idea gives that rectangle or square s- a space. Um, we would just be physically creating it a, perhaps a one-foot taller paver zone within the paver zone that the rock is sitting on, that creates just that, a little bit of plinth or platform for it to sit on that's two, four times bigger than the rock, you know, just to do that. You could then sit on it if you wanted, um, around it as like a, a low bench or something like that, but ultimately raises it up. Just a thought. I like to be creative, I don't know.
I like the idea of being able to sit, sit next to it or.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that concept, rather than it just sitting on the ground.
All right, well, we're gonna keep moving forward if that's all right, if everyone agrees to go to the other, uh, scope items. Uh, I challenge myself to create something that's, meets your needs and, uh, is exciting for your community, so, I think, thank you for all that input. The next, uh, our buildup of those concepts that's kind of starting back, so as we started to create, uh, look at it as, from a creative perspective, we use a lot of hand drawing, and that's kind of represents this idea of, uh, hand drawing and thinking about what fountains and sprays and where things would be located within that. The idea is that it is on access axes from the gazebo that would be off and to the top of the slide at this point. There's a plaza or a, a concrete zone that connects the, the, the gazebo to this two-piece, um, site. Uh, on your left would be the idea of the, the water wall. Uh, we'll show you pictures of that in a minute, and then that water wall ultimately becomes the water that enters into the splash pad. You're familiar with splash pads, that there's vertical sprays or objects that you can walk under or through, stuff like that. As we, and kids play in so many different ways, but, but one of the ways that we've observed and we're showcased while they're bluffing a minute, is the idea of playing in this, this, this slow stream of water where they can float things or stop the water or, you know, or splash kick or whatever. And so that idea of the water wall from, the water moving from the water wall through all of the different guns and splash pads amenities is really, in, in rock formations is something that, uh, we've heard, we've showcased somewhat, starting from the performance or preference survey and into that. And so, uh, it's hard to tell, but ultimately you can kind of get the hint that that water's moving through that, uh, splash pad area. And then the rectangle to the far right, it would be our mechanical room that we'll talk about also. So if we go to the next slide, it really kind of starts to show the more refinement of that idea, uh, definitely based on, uh, trying to meet that. There are multiple elements to that that are shown on the left side, um, represented by the different colors that might be hard to read at this scale, um, but ultimately, um, again, the idea of B, which is that water wall that we'll show you, as that start of it, that's elevated to five to six feet of a wall that comes down into that body of water, would go underneath the walk or through, under a bridge that allows ADA access around the site as well, and then ult- ultimately enters into the splash pad, plaid spray ground. There, what's shown in yellow and in brown are a series of benches and limestone rocks that provide lots of seating as parents will sit and view all the different play within, so they're kind of like this dry zone that's really within the outside of it. And then, um, uh, the different types of spray. Some are directional sprays, some are vertical sprays, a few of them we'll talk about have lights, and LED lights, and then ultimately headed towards our pump room that is identified as D, C representing the bridges, A representing, uh, this channel of water that moves through. I feel like we should just keep going a little bit more, um, just kind of show you what visually some of this looks like. To me, it's probably hard to read, uh, at this scale. So go to the next slide, or is that the next one? Okay. So, um, every splash, this splash pad is very few vertical elements, um, that water is, uh, moving under or through. Most of the water is coming from the ground plane, um, uh, so maybe this is more of a spray ground than a splash gr- pad, if we really wanted to get technical with this. It's a sprays from above, below, um, splash pad sounds better, but ultimately starts to show the different things. The four r- red dots in the middle are representing these, um, water cannons. They can spray water ten to fifteen feet, and thus those four red dots are about, uh, twelve and a half feet from each other, so the idea that, um, a person could be hiding or standing behind a, a boulder, throwing a spray that you'll see in next slide or two over that and, and trying to hit his friend, um, uh, with a very small amount of water, five gallons per minute. We also have the different sprays and, and stuff like that, but let's just go to the next slide that kind of showcases some of the amenities. We haven't picked out really what the, the range of sprays are. There is, uh, probably about twenty that we will be choosing from at different heights. Um, they will be age-appropriate, so like, the smaller, we'll have the smaller bubblers that are, are six to two feet tall, and those are for the toddlers. And then when we get closer to the five-foot range, those are really the five to twelve-year-old play. So it's gonna be a range of different sprays ba- to allow for all different ages to engage within this, um, but so ultimately, anything from the, the art jets or, uh, or different jets to the bubblers will be incorporated within this to really allow that large range of, of play. There are some pictures that kind of show some of the kids utilizing the different heights. The next slide shows some more of those different kind of types of enemy entities that are, again, the different heights, the different flows with each and of those. We are, um, gonna use, as that last slide showed, interchangeable sprays, so like, in the future, if we wanted to change out spray heads, um, we have that flexibility, uh, to do so.
Could als- could also do it in, in the middle of a season as well, so to change the experience of that feature, uh, more often than once a year, it could be twice a year, to change the experience of those different elements.
Exactly. The next slide really, uh, shows the idea of, as we get to dusk, um, that visibility from Ohio Street and through the park to engage and get excitement, uh, with the idea that there's an LED ring that could be color changeable, um, that ultimately allows tho- those, um, water, six of the water jets are planned to have the LED rings around them, uh, in a, a kind of a, a, a zone that's shown there with the, kind of the, the six green dots, uh, which would be on the eastern side of the splash pad. Each of these have the interchangeable nozzles, um, but ultimately create that kind of dusk look. Right now, your splash pads are open until nine, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, um, oh, and open, what's your current season?
Um, May first through the end of this coming weekend, actually, end of October, or I'm sorry, end of September.
So, so definitely, uh, a lot of more, um, visibility in the, the, the early and later months with that, but, um, they're definitely, um, very popular, uh, and they look great. And when, when working with the lighted water wall that we'll see in a second really have a, a lot of excitement.
Our existing splash pads, I looked ahead here to the, the, the pump room and the reservoir, do our existing pads have a reservoir or is it just water down the drain?
Yeah, they're all recirculating, so they do have, all have reservoirs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would the LED sprays be visible driving along Ohio at night?
So, they'll sh- the idea in my mind is that they will turn off with the, the, the spray ground at nine or whatever, the parks department, but the water wall would continue to stay on, and that lit, uh, provides that through all evening, uh, look, if, if that's how we're gonna manage the lighting on that water wall. It's gonna be easier to see than, than from, but if there is this glow of light and water, depending on how high those jets are, um, there definitely is the possibility of visibility, uh, at least this idea of, hey, there's a lot of moving light of color, um, it's a very flat, Ohio's elevated, um, so, um, I'm hopeful, I'm excited for that opportunity to be seen, but it's really the water wall that's gonna be the major focal from Ohio Street.
Just think, be a nice backdrop for a symphony concert at nine thirty, ten o'clock at night, or a little jazz combo or something.
Steel drum.
Steel drum, there you go. Oh, really, that's a good idea.
This company, Aquatics.
Uh-huh.
So you would be essentially building a package with them?
Yes. We would, uh, per requirements, it would be a, a performance, well, we, it would be basis of design allowing other competitors to be able to bid that product as well. They're locally made in Nebraska, um, so they're probably one of the closer manufactured, um, products in, in the line that we're looking at, the lines we're looking at, so we really like some of the locality that, um, manufacturers also providing product to other parks or the pool, right?
Yeah.
So, so, um, there's a lot of reasons why we like that manufacturer, but we'll keep it open for other people to compete.
There are, uh, also three manu- three major manufacturers of splash pad, uh, components that can create a package that are on, um, Sourcewell or other types of, uh, um, cooperative purchasing plans as well, so that's al- also a po- potential option.
And then who does the install? Does that bid out to local contractors?
That's correct. We're buying, you are buying, um, a, a concrete masonry, you know, plumbing, electrical engineers, earthwork es- earthwork excavators, and they're buying all of the parts and pieces to install those within this thing. So the, we're showing right now the manufacturer side, not necessarily the installer side. The next slide is, um, what I tried to talk about, which is those, those four water cannons that, um, are meant to create, uh, uh, visual interest but also, uh, activity. They, they are spheres that can be manipulated and rolled so that the, the, the small spray of water can go, um, around up and down in that moment, so it's not like it's an on or off, it's not like it's a gun, it's really just a water kind of, they call it a cannon or hydrosphere that is, allows for, um, interaction and movement from the, the play, the, the visitors, the residents, but how they're interacting with each other allows them to engage each other, um, in a fun way, centrally located within the splash pad.
You can see some, from some of the photos that were from their website, it also does give a nice feature for someone who's using a wheelchair to use those features, those elevated features as well.
The next slide represents, um, a simple on- activator. The splash pad will not be, will only be on a, um, inter- interval, uh, to save water and energy when not in use, and so, uh, often, uh, it's, it's common for ten to twenty minutes for that activator to be, so again, every ten to twenty minutes, uh, hopefully a child or adult would be able to push this button and be able to go on back on for a timer. So during the day, if it's not in use, um, it's not running.
It's, uh, very similar to our existing splash pads in town. It's about, it's on a fifteen-minute timer currently, for the ones we have in town now.
The next slide represents, oh, rock! Um, oh, I can look over there. The, um, to make it more natural, uh, more exciting, we're using a very dense limestone, uh, in most cases, but also we can be using a, um, a granite if need be. This, um, we're rep- recommending that there's two quarries that we like the rock coming from. This one's out of McFarland, Kansas, but also out of Manhattan, Kansas is another quarry that we, that has a very dense limestone, without having to go to Indiana for Indiana limestone. Uh, we will be looking for a rock that is cut on, on a side or to lay flat, um, uh, but also provides color and texture, uh, similar to some of the pictures you'll be seeing in a minute, um, but also can be cored to allow fountains to go through them as we showcase in a minute. But ultimately, what's exciting is there's this, this seat, the seat zone that wraps the whole splash pad, separates it from circulation, ultimately allows Separates it from circulation, ultimately allows a lot of seating, a lot of visibility. It's uh popular to uh, for parents to engage. We do interrupt it with seats or benches so that there are backs on, you know, a- as well as um for uh water. The water was it, that's within the splash pad drains to the middle, but the water that's on circulation drains away. So we don't want, um, we separating our clean water from directly di- dirty water or rainwater. And so um the, those punctures in the wall allows the rainwater to escape. And not be uh collected or combined with our clean chlorinated water. Next slide is the um, so again, uh what it's, what's, what's fun about this opportunity is really working with nature. And making a unique and special place that's not necessarily similar anywhere else. By using these natural rocks, uh which could have bubblers within them, that allows people, children to play. Experience water at different elevations, um but also with that natural amenity. So as you look at the site plan, um uh there is plenty of boulders just set within the, the splash pad to create that. Entity area for children to run around, sit on, hide around, whatever, but again, they're all eighteen inches tall. The next slide, it kinda shows that fun channel area, so that was the A on the site plan. We talked about that uh two to four inches of water that moves through uh the play area. This is a Wilder Bluff example project that uh we were the civil engineer for in Shawnee. As we experience and kinda what's shown in this picture, not on tension, is most of the kids are actually in the channel. They put, most of the plays in the channel for whatever reason. And again, a lot of the, the people, the visitors, the adults are all sitting around the outside just watching, communicating, enjoying their time. And so having this unique amenity that has that large amount of seating. But this area of this channel of water, uh that is collecting the water from the different play, the, the splash or the bubblers from the rocks. And taking it to the, the final collection point is um kind of a unique environment that we, we, we've talked about um bringing to Salina. With also having a, a pea gravel as the textured exposed aggregate, uh provides a um. A, 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 you know, a, a, a good traction, uh but also allows you to see the visibility. We don't like painting splash pads, even though I have um surfaces, it does allow them to create a um slippery environment. So when we add paint, we have sand and other aggregates added to the paint to create that rough look. But in this situation, having that exposed aggregate uh is really um, I think beautiful, and I hope your community would enjoy that. The next slide continues to showcase um that example in Wilder Bluff. Where there's water coming from the different boulders that wrap the, the channel. And then ultimately are feeding the water into the channel as it moves around. Again, uh the kids are playing in the channel, so I don't know, not intentional, but they're, they, they love playing in that thin flow of water. It's not a rushing water by any stretch of imagination. Uh it's very shallow, but um it kinda showcases some of that. The next slide um is an example of how we would detail the water coming out of the boulders, spraying out. It's literally just kind of a hole cored through chosen boar- uh boulders that has the nozzle uh located high in the rock. When we um have it, when it spray out or when it bubbles out, as the picture shows next, I think that nozzle is lower, set in the boulder. Or flush, yes. So that, that for the splash pad?
Yep.
Okay, so could we go back to one of the site plans of the, the splash pad real quick? Yeah, I don't know what slide, do you know what slide number?
Uh, page fourteen.
Fourteen, please. One more, I guess.
Or eleven, I'm sorry, showed you.
So, um. We're, this is, oh, I guess it is, okay. This is a good stop before we talk about the wall. We could talk about the splash pad and its play, or we could go to the wall, and then we go to the plumbing systems. Is kind of uh continuing on with the presentation, but I wanted to pause for a moment. I said a lot of things and wanted to understand kinda what, what you liked and maybe wanted to modify based on the plan as shown.
Splash pad looks fun even. Scared a cat of water like me can get in that, so that's, that's alright.
This example in Shawnee, is that what it's called, wider, wilder bluff?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's fairly new, I think it opened um, this probably was the second or third season, definitely not older than three seasons. That just finished. I feel like this might have been, this is probably the end of the third season.
And is it located in a park or?
It is, it's, that's the name of the park, Wilder Bluff Park. It's on the western side of Shawnee, so it's um definitely on the western edge of the metropolitan area. It's a, a new park, uh and that play, that splash pad is um highly used. It's also n- next to a, a, you know, a playground, brand new playground with multiple elevations and crawl through environments and stuff like that. And a big shelter that can be rented for parties and stuff like that. So um, uh parking lot, lots of green solutions for water treatment, stuff like that. So it's definitely um a tour if you wanna come. We're gonna do things a lot better than that, that we'll talk about still today. Some lessons learned for sure. Well, let's go, let's keep moving to the water wall, I'm sorry, and, and then. Oh, I'm slow, okay. Yeah, yeah, get me to the letter B. There, one more backwards, one more somewhere. Oh, I guess there was a C. Never mind, B please. Okay, this is a water wall, so this is a, a exciting example. Uh ours um has some similarities to that, this one's in downtown St. Louis at the City Garden. Uh, very expensive, we're not, this is incredibly expensive project. Funded by the arts and many other, um it's a, it within a um public art park that's two square city blocks um in, in design. But the idea is that there's a, a wall that is rounded, that has a break in the wall that allows water to drop through that break. And into a, a reflecting pool or a pool of water. Uh, we are anticipating that that pool of waters is only four inches deep of water. So again, you're gonna have a, a noise and, and um. Noise is important to create that white noise, that drop of water into the, the splash of that. We're probably gonna only have about three quarters of an inch over the top of a eight foot opening. This um is more water flowing over ours than, we'll have less water flowing over the top of it. But it will be about a um, a six inch pipe of water, I haven't figured out the gallons per minute. It'll be about two hundred gallons per minute of water moving over the top of this. I can kind of give you a little bit more, um but it was important to kinda showcase an example as we try to, to define the special specialties of it. The next slide, which is so impressive, is when you see the, it at nighttime, really glowing um within that light. Uh against that natural rock, we would be using a, a, a natural rock. Our rock is probably not gonna be uh that flat, that's a very pristine, flat look, and we're gonna have it more natural. Uh so that it looks more like an outcropping than a, a refined wall that this is, this is a very flat wall as shown there in downtown St. Louis. But ultimately allows that uh, that wall look. Then, the next slide, just to keep moving forward, uh represents all that's, all the water is collected um into one central location. I love the idea of putting that, that collection system underneath a bridge, so the water just kinda disappears. As it enters into a, um, the drain system that connects to the underground vault, that's the water. Something shown like this um in two locations.
I believe that there's a kind of a, something you're planning for, a weir system to uh collect debris and things like that. So staff can remove that bridge, collect that weir, clean it out, put it back.
Yes. Any floatables, leaves or whatever will not be able to enter into the pipe, nor balls or Barbie dolls or anything like that. But people do like floating things down the river, and so um we're gonna make sure that gets collected before, or it can be retrieved.
In these pictures, was there a natural drop, it looks like eight to ten feet down to the bottom of the pool?
Sorry. In these pictures, was there a natural drop that eight to ten feet over the, for the waterfall, or was that created on flat?
So the St. Louis example?
Yeah.
So the elevated um behind that wall is actually a uh outdoor, um a brand new. Uh coffee shop and more uh elevated art and a pool of water that's, that has art within it. So like it's a body of water that has art within it that drops over that wall, that's backdrop by a coffee shop in the heart of downtown. Our wall, again, we are gonna be building into the hillside mound up dirt so that, you know, we're, we have a, the wall is not freestanding. But ultimately into the landscape.
So it would drop about how far?
So we're showing about um five feet for the water drop, the top of wall's six feet above water, so that there's um. It's, and it would be landscape behind it, so you can actually get access to the backside of the wall. But um it is, so yeah, in both situations, St. Louis or this one, yeah, you very much can get to the backside of the wall if you wanted to in that public park environment. We're gonna try to distract or discourage that. The next slide is um really getting into the mechanical plumbing systems. One of the um, our recommendation is, is MEC H two O, that's their title of it. Our, the parks department was really like the way this looked because it really made um maintenance easier. It provided a, a security um environment. This is a elevated plumbing system that is sitting right on top of the three thousand gallon concrete tank. So again, it's concrete instead of fiberglass, which is a good thing. It's two pieces, the tank is two pieces, and then it's all craned in, it's prefabric- prefabricated offsite. So you have all the connections are tested um prior to leaving the manufacturing plant. The next slide kinda shows the inside of that, so it's a very clean look. It has our sand filters, our chemical filters, our array of all of the valves along one wall, it has an eye cleaning station, the control panels. Many other UV is shown there in the middle. Even a pulley system that allows um, uh down the middle, that yellow allows you to connect um or move anything if needed. Uh or connect you because there is a, um, there's the latch, it's shown in the bottom, the hatch that's shown in the bottom right to get you down into the, the tank. The tank is lighted, which is interesting to me. But you could, you could, you could tether yourself to the outside through, to the, that system if need be, because of confined space requirements. Uh comes in multiple colors, it could be uh um. Uh it could have different graffiti or, or signage on the outside if you were interested in custom designed. We're gonna put it into the landscape on the backside, so it's easily visible from the parking areas. But also um. Provides this, this is a um, this is um. I think a, a brand new idea, uh it was installed in Derby, Kansas, so there's one of these in Derby, Kansas as an example. A little far away, but it, there's one of those that we could talk to them as well if you wanted to see more about that. But um, park staff has received this really well and are encouraging me to move forward with this type of system.
And does this monitor and treat the water? Is it all automated?
Yes, there's automated, it could be connected to phones, um similar to what you're doing now. You might still have someone on site daily just to check it um uh once a day, is kinda I think what you said, Jeff.
Yeah, at the, we have automated controllers for uh at Kenwood Cove. We would, we, we would picture a similar system that would automatically monitor chemical levels, whether it be chlorine or um pH levels. And then have the ability to adjust it and turn on those pumps accordingly to adjust it as needed throughout the day.
You know where in Derby this is located?
No.
No.
I uh, it's called Library Park.
Okay.
Um.
I'm down there frequently, so.
Okay.
We'll check it out.
The, I mean. These pictures are from that Library Park project, so. Uh, well, next slide.
The floor plan.
Is the floor plan, so that's just kinda showcases uh the different levels. One of the things that's different um than this model is we're thinking about adding a second pump system to run just the water wall. That, and, and so uh we're still trying to figure out how the square footage within the, the, the building works to add another pump. To the environment, but um that's, that's really the only major change that we'll see with, from this picture as a floor plan. And the next slide is our cost estimate. So. So we have three slides left, the, the cost estimate, then, then the, we created some alternates uh that take us over the budget of nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh and then the proposed schedule, which is accelerated, we're gonna meet that. Excited about getting this thing open uh May of next year. This kind of lays out some of those expectations. There is probably twenty-five thousand dollars that we can save on the memorial uh of not having that um onyx and pr- imprinted. That occurs there, and, and so we'll continue to work um this uh. Proposed fee or.
You said the water wall in St. Louis was very expensive, but on here, it's one of the cheapest items.
That's correct, 'cause mine's not like, we're not, we don't, we're not building like them. They probably have a concrete wall behind it.
So how, how, like I said before, it's hard to visualize what you have here. How, how big would the wall be?
So it's the same about height as the wall of St. Louis, their, their rock is probably not a, a local rock. I don't know, I'm from St. Louis, we don't have quarries of limestone in St. Louis like we do in the state of Kansas. So they're probably shipping in all that rock from Arkansas perhaps. Theirs is a very long wall that's tall and has an elevated plaza and water features behind it. Uh there's a lot of, they're, they have a pool on the bottom side. It's, it's, I would expect they probably are building it with a concrete wall. Because of all that weight behind it, where we're just landscaping behind it, so we're gonna have the limestone wall sitting on a concrete footing. With limestone blocks with a aggregate and filter fabric and then dirt, really. and filter fabric and then dirt really that that's holding that up. My structural engineers still have to figure, you know, work with me on those details, but it's not gonna have a ton of concrete built in it or nor rebar.
So how how wide are you talking ten, twenty, thirty feet?
Well, the boulders are only about um twenty inches. So it's about a just, you know, the the wall's just twenty inches wide.
I think at one time you told me it was about thirty feet across.
Oh, yeah, okay. How long of a wall is? Yeah, thirty feet versus St. Louis went the whole two blocks.
And so the wall is thirty feet long, but how wide is the actual waterfall? The actual waterfall?
The waterfall is only eight feet wide, right?
Yeah, so if you go to slide eleven.
And but why did you mean front to back?
I didn't know if we're talking the boulders. Yeah, the face of the rock to the back of rock is just one boulder wide.
So if you look at this, the preliminary design here um on the side B over there, that the section where there's the waterfall, right? Yeah, right where he's got his cursor?
Yeah.
That's eight feet wide. The entire the entirety of the wall is about thirty feet.
That's correct.
So so the waterfall in and of itself is much, much smaller than than what you saw in those pictures. It's representative, it'll look similar to that. We'll have water coming over in that way, but it's much, much shorter. So yeah, if we wanted it to be wider, um you know, that that's an option. We could do that. It's just it's it's cost. So um well, and it depends on how much the pump house can handle. Really, the biggest, most expensive part of this project is the pump house and treating that water. So that's two hundred and ninety, three hundred thousand dollars of the project. You have to have that um in order to do a splash pad at all. So the addition of the of the waterfall and the water feature kind of on that that looks like B isn't as much money um because you're you're not having to buy a a separate treatment system. So if we're gonna do these projects on the other side of town from each other, we'd have to buy two of those water treatment systems to run that. So it just makes it quite a bit cheaper to do it kind of at at that economy of scale, if that makes sense.
So the entire length of the water wall at this table, the dais was stretched out straight would be that much longer than this table. I'm I'm just, it seems big in this room. It just looks like it's gonna be small in a big park. I'm just again, I guess picture would would help, but it's if it's that small, I'd just as soon see it behind the memorial, but uh I'm just thought I guess from the picture, I thought it was longer. Anybody good at estimating distance?
About the size of the dais?
Six twenty six.
Troy got a tape measure.
Yeah, I my pace is about three feet. So what is this? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Times three is twenty one feet. So it's twice, it's about twice as long.
But then the water actual
The water wall at eight feet is
Is only gonna be
Um I'm about seven feet right here, so you know, about that much.
Right.
And again, that's just based on how much water do we want to go over? How much GPM do we got coming out of the tank?
Okay, I guess I misunderstood. So the width of the actual water falling is only eight feet.
Right.
Right. What's the projected height on that waterfall?
So I'm two feet tall, so it's tight. Which is pretty close to those picture example that I tried to showcase.
This is all without limestone?
We we can make the weir a lot longer and just have less water coming over it. So again, it could be a thinner profile water over a larger spot and still have the same amount of water. So Treadwell Jones, um our aquatic designer, um we've been working very the team has been working very closely with uh GBA and um again, we're trying to make again, the smaller the opening, the more water, the more splash, the more force thick thicker, you know, as opposed to just this clean look.
Right.
Does Derby have something similar to this? A water wall?
No. I can't think of any other water walls like St. Louis.
Sorry, Jim, but I like to see.
With with the
I like to see and test drive.
So I mean, there's plenty of um zero plain um fountains that exist. There's one, there's a outside Johnson County Federal Courthouse in Olatha, Kansas. There's a thirty foot wall that just water just thinly comes over the top. I'm proposing that looks a lot similar to the one in St. Louis. If you have a different look in mind or or one more of a um we uh the I'm thinking back to the preference study that kind of showcased some of that. If you go to the very um very one of the very top third slide, um that more of that Bass Pro Shop, that one that left right there, that Bass Pro Shop one was received very well. Again, that this water coming over a boulder wall um has that natural, natural scenery is very well perceived. And so again, trying to break down what you see in St. Louis, which is more of a clean, you know, wall. It's more of a rocky type sod. It's kind of what we're after.
Is that the so the actual height from the ground where the water begins its fall is just five feet? And the reason I'm asking is when I think of a waterfall, I think of something taller than me. And you know, just to look down on a waterfall, I mean, I'm only five ten, so it's but if I can look down on the top of it, it's not gonna be very high. If that low, I'd just as soon have that long, you know, column of quietly flowing water where there's no attempt to necessarily reproduce a waterfall, uh but just a quiet, peaceful place.
We can we can go higher, longer. We can do all these ideas. We're definitely trying to balance the budget with an emphasis on the splash pad. Um the interconnectivity was fun. We'll owe Jeff multiple more, you know, another cost estimate or two. I definitely hear you that we'd like it to be taller if possible and bigger if possible. And we'll push the budget to the limit.
Of course, I'm I'm biased. I grew up in Washington DC where budget was not an issue when they built the fountains and all the other stuff. So I'm just used to big expensive fountains, but so I realize we have to compromise somewhere, but.
Yeah, I don't think the aesthetic qualities in question, it's more the scale is it gonna be appropriate for the the location. And then it begs the question, if we scale up, how much more is that gonna cost us, you know, in terms of, you know, say you do a ten foot waterfall and maybe it's sixteen feet wide? And I'm just spitballing uh you know, numbers, but you know, aesthetically, it's it's there. I mean, you have rock that's indigenous to this area. It makes sense to see a lot of limestone utilized. And it's it's just a clean look. I mean, I've I've done it on retaining wall projects and other projects and landscaping and and it holds up well and cost effective compared to other materials. I think where Mayor Long mines coming from is maybe more like he was expecting more perspective, like architectural renderings. Where hey, this is what this is gonna look like from the south side and west side, et cetera. And I know timeline's short and we're asking for a lot in a short amount of time, but if that's something we're we're able to get, that would probably be very helpful. Because it's it's hard to visualize for some, you know, like some folks have more background with architectural renderings than others and if that makes sense.
I hundred percent agree with you. I'll I'll see what I can do with Jeff.
And I'm not trying to throw more work at you. I'm just trying to.
We we've created lots of three D renderings.
Actually, we are.
That's fair. That's a fair point. It's just, I think we're trying to get to the same place and it's gonna require a little more work on your part. That's fair.
We were hearing about cost estimates there. Uh is this coming out of the parks budget or how are we gonna pay for this?
It's uh coming from the parks maintenance budget, which there is a um a uh plan or there's a there's a funding, approved funding for this year uh to cover a portion of the cost. The remaining portions would come out of that fund balance of park maintenance as well. And that's my tentative plan to fund this was coming from solely from park maintenance, but one from a an approved project. The approved project was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the water feature portion at the time, but then I would any any remaining dollars would come from the fund balance of the park maintenance fund, which I think currently it's about one point eight million dollars.
So do we wanna focus?
Do these estimates include engineering costs? So what's the anticipated engineering cost? Ten percent, fifteen percent of a project?
Correct. That was ten percent that you approved in August.
That was a one hundred and eight thousand dollars.
The hundred and eight, okay, that's
One oh nine or one oh eight?
Yeah, close enough.
Yeah.
Also, we have a lot of uh different types of pumps and filters. Do these come with any type of warranty? Do they have a one year, three year or any? And uh do you have any idea what that is on the like?
So they always have, there's different levels. There'll be the one year, all everything included from um you know, fixing, repair, maintenance, then each product could will probably have about five year parts. But not labor warranty uh is typical. We can always buy more warranty, but um that there is uh extended warranties on all of this.
And then do we have any estimate on what like annual cost will be to to run a a project like this with filtering through the water and electricity?
The best example we have are our our current splash pads. Uh expense wise, as far as materials, it's approximately thirty five hundred to five thousand for chemical, electrical repairs, plumbing repairs. And then um we have about ten to fifteen hours per week of staff time to go and double check the chemicals, clean off the pad. And uh didn't do the math beyond that, but it's between ten to fifteen hours a week uh for a five month season. And that's giving a daily input to that splash pad.
And I know we don't have much time left here, but did I understand, you know, the current splash pads, they are shut off so they can't run at night. Is that correct?
Right, the timer would not allow it to be operated or that actuator be able to start it.
Will this do something similar?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the waterfall will also have to shut down then at night?
We haven't, we had those preliminary conversations, but we haven't got uh that too, but part of myself goes to are we, if this is closed and this is still running, is this now the water feature?
Right.
That and then um but then I don't know how it's engineered. We're still, as far as how it's plumbed, to know if it can be truly separated, I don't know at this time.
Would the water feature run on the same cycle of as the spray park as in terms of what made of September?
The same water would be filtered uh and chemically treated for the splash pad and the fountain or the and the water.
I guess my question is, would could the water feature run year round?
I think that's a possibility. Um we just, we haven't, we haven't got that far. I haven't seen those engineering to know that that capability exists, but I certainly think it can, it can.
I mentioned our intent to add a second found or a second um pump in that pump room, that that area that could run it separately on its own uh sequence. So um it will be designed to be able to run year round minus adding frozen temperatures.
Right.
We would probably have a shutdown for frozen temperatures because we're probably not gonna add a glycol to it to make it antifreeze type environment, so.
Right, or put a boiler on it.
So uh yeah, we could put a heater on it too, I guess, but uh right now that's not the intent.
So so we're bumping up on time here uh just a little bit. I guess uh we we owe you, we'll bring back some refined plans on Jerry I remember Jerry Iby Memorial. We'll bring back some refined plans and costs as far as what the water feature goes. Was there any thoughts about the size and scope of what we we provided as the splash pad? Does it, does that seem appropriate? That we didn't have a lot of questions about that portion. So if if that seems appropriate, we'll we'll plan to what what you have in that plan and try to bring this back at our next meeting so that we can um with some renderings and some, if you can do that, Jim.
The zone is about six thousand square feet is what the all the wall, plaza and the splash pad equal. So um if you figure that out, um measuring that off, but yes, we're coming back to you.
We can bring you back some may maybe better renderings with sizes and scale so you can see that with an intent maybe to try and move forward at the next meeting with some additional. I mean, it's gonna be some additional costs on size depending on, you know, but there'll be some options available, so you can do that.
Okay, I agree. We are up on the clock, so we will take a short break here and thank you for the information. We'll see you back here at four o'clock for the regular meeting. Good afternoon. Welcome to the September 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Salina City Commission. I would ask staff if the Kansas Open Meetings Act required notice had been properly provided.
Yes.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Longbine.
Sir? Hold on. Take your phone out of conversation. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hopick.
Here.
Commissioner Ivey.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Thank you. May all who are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings. Go to item four, the consent agenda.
Item 4.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of September 9th, 2024. Item 4.2, approve resolution number 24-8243, appointing members of the Planning Commission to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Heritage, Heritage Commission. Item 4.3, approve resolution number 24-8236, authorizing the mayor to sign a second addendum to the memorandum of understanding among the City of Salina, Celine County, and Central Kansas Mental Health Center relating to the Mental Health Co-Responders Program. And item 4.4, authorize an amendment to the 2024 SubCIP and advertise bids for replacement of Public Works Loader Unit Number 127 in 2024.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any consent agenda items? Is there any item a commissioner would like to remove? Have it entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, Mayor Longbine, I move that we approve consent agenda items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4.
Second that. A motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Administration, item 5.1.
Item 5.1, authorize the Director of Utilities to enter into a water connection agreement between the City of Salina and Grant M. Wilcox to provide water service to a property located at 370 East Avenue A, South Industrial Area, Celine County, Kansas.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. The South Industrial Area subdivision was platted in 1965, was outside the city limits at that time and continues to be outside the city limits. It covers roughly 54 acres and includes 52 lots that are arranged around Avenue A, B, and C. There was a vicinity map in your packet to kind of make you familiar with that. The city's been providing water and sanitary sewer service through outside city connections agreements in this area since the late 60s. The city's comprehensive plan contains recommendations regarding utility extensions. In general, utility extensions should occur in an orderly and efficient manner where needed, whether it's for development or something encouraged by the city, should not support leapfrog or disorganized development, and should be contiguous with the city limits. Mr. Wilcox is seeking a water tap to connect to an existing eight-inch public water main that's located in Avenue A, so at this point in time, there's no extension of public utilities to serve this area. The quality and quantity of an existing well at this site is in poor condition and has been that way for at least 14 years ago when I worked with the, his relatives on the same agreement. So that didn't come into play at that time. So it's been poor quality. The sewer service is connected to an existing private sewer system and then connects to a city-owned pump station. So the property owners have paid their share of the sewer line out front, and at this point in time, there's not really been sewer use at the area for years and years, according to Mr. Wilcox's septic tank and so on has been the process there. The city's annexation and utility extension policy allows the extension of utilities to industrial services outside the city limit, does not allow that for residential or commercial. Central Kansas Metal Works operates a structural steel fabrication operation at 370 East Avenue A, which is an industrial use. The attached agreement contains provisions for, to address water connection fees, installation costs, termination, changes in ownership, and use restrictions. In addition, it, it has a provision for consent to annexation and for the property, and that would happen at the time the City Commission determines, determines it to be in the best interest of the city to do so. That annexation would carry with subsequent property owners. Nearly all the properties in Avenue A in the South Industrial Area have the outside city connection agreements with consent to future annexation. But I must give you a, a slight hint there that Mr. Skrag asked me to be able to provide him a list of everyone, and as Dean and I and Keith began to evaluate that, we determined it was probably in our best interest to take a little time and go back and review all the outside agreements, ensure who's utilizing and paying the outside the city rate of 125%. Who might be customers of our fire contracts, and if there's anyone left with public wells out there in the area. So that's a, a project that several staff are working on, and we'll try to bring you some more information back to that later date. This property is part of a benefit district to serve the area. Under the terms of that district, it's based on either area or a front footage fee, and that's paid at the time you connect. In this case, the property is served by 200-foot front footage on Avenue A with a connection fee of $4,248. Staff has identified three options. The first is approve a motion authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute a water connection agreement between the City of Salina and Grant M. Wilcox for 370 East Avenue A. Approve a motion with amendments as the City Commission seems, deems appropriate. Do not sign the agreement, which would result in no city water service to 370 East Avenue A. Staff recommends option one. Mr. Grant is here, if you would have any questions for him or, or myself.
Questions for Ms. Tasker. Thank you. Does Mr. Wilcox have any comments, or?
He said he'd say hi, and I think he's accomplished that.
Any public comment? Bring us back to action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this governing body authorize the Director of Utilities to execute a water connection agreement between the City of Salina and Grant M. Wilcox to provide water service to a property located at 370 East Avenue A, South Industrial Area, Celine County, Kansas.
Second. A motion is second to approve authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute a water connection agreement between the City of Salina and Grant Wilcox to provide water service to a property located at 370 East Avenue A in the South Industrial Area, Celine County, Kansas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Enjoy your water.
Thank you.
Bring us to item 5.2.
Item 5.2, approve ordinance number 24-11220, amending chapter 38, Article 1 of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2024 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities published by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
Mr. Sutton.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Sutton. I'm the city prosecutor. I just started in May, so I haven't done this before, so bear with me.
Welcome to Salina City Commission.
Thank you. Today I'm here to ask, or to recommend that the city adopt the STO, the Standard Traffic Ordinance, as amended by the Kansas Cities League of Kansas, League of Kansas Municipalities. Briefly, this is the standard traffic ordinances utilized by police here in Salina. In the past, we've adopted ordinances that amended the local, those to account for local amendments. Those include the authority of the police, maximum speed limits, stopping standing parking prohibited in specific places, and unlawful operation of a golf cart. I would still recommend that those remain in place as they've been in the past. The changes this year for, that have been recommended in the STOs deals mainly with the restricted driver's license sanction that's being allowed by the state now, resulting in, instead of the judge and the states just suspending someone's driver's license completely, there is now some provisions that allow for restricted driver's license instead so that people can go to work, to and from employment, or to and from employment through their, conditions of their work, and in sometimes medical appointments, probation, court appointments. If they're not restricted or suspended because of other things, they can also, some of them can pick up their children, go to groceries, and religious worship. It just depends on why they're suspended through the state. And that's mainly the two big changes for the STOs this year is just allowing the restricted license. As far as the UPC, the Uniform Public Offense Code, the changes this year were the disorderly conduct. They removed some language, the engage in a noisy conduct, based on a state law that found that to be protected speech. Otherwise, the language that was added for the UPOC added basically to the marijuana, the paraphernalia, possession of controlled substance statutes, where now they're recommending that sometimes officers not arrest people if the person is seeking assistance due to an overdose or to an interaction from someone, maybe fentanyl, for example, if someone comes in contact while they're trying to assist someone who's having an overdose, that maybe they not necessarily arrest them, but to provide medical assistance. There are some restrictions such as if there's a search warrant being served on someone's house, they probably are not going to get that allowance, but otherwise. We have in the past adopted changes to the UPOC. Those included an addition in disorderly, where if you throw a substance on some, a vehicle or someone, there's a discharge for firearm, for gunsmiths, and then there's a airgun change, BB gun for licensed instructors in the city. I would again recommend that we keep that prior language in place. In the past, we've not, it's been a recommendation to not adopt several of the UPOCs, the deposits or damaging sewers, barbed wire, smoke detectors, smoking, wildlife, dangerous animals, mainly because there's other city codes that affect those, or that address those more specifically for the City of Salina. I'm also, there's been a recommendation in the past, and I continue that, regarding crimes of public trust against public officials. It's, it's my opinion that the county attorney is in a better position to address those since he's an elected, or she is an elected position. He or she can utilize the police department if there's a county official or the sheriff's office, if there's a city official, or the AG if needed. So they have better, more means to enforce those. The worthless check and the criminal use of financial card, those have been left out in the past, and I would recommend as well, because again, the county attorney's in a better situation because it's usually intermingled with forgerys, making false information, ID theft, which those are felonies in my office. Municipal court doesn't deal with felonies, so. And then the possession of controlled substance and distribution, again, I, I think we've done it in the past, and I agree to recommend today that we don't adopt the possession of controlled substance such as methamphetamine, for example, and then distribution, again, those are better suited for the county attorney's office since they're felony matters there. They would just be misdemeanors in municipal court, and the county attorney's office, they have a, the district court has better options through their SB 123 for treatment and ways to prevent recidivism, and the committee corrections has more supervision than, than we would have. Electioneering, there's been a wrong language in the statute, and again, I recommend that changes in the past. The change that I've also, I've been in contact with the animal services, they've recommend, or they asked to have readopted section 7.46 of the city code, and I looked at that, and I'm asking, recommending that as well. It, it deals with the animal care requirements. Currently, cruelty to the animal is the only statute that they have, and a lot of times if it's, they're going out and their dogs or cats or animals aren't having food, water, shelter, and they really don't want to have to resort to the criminal cruelty to the animal, they'd rather just have a city code that gives them some authority, some teeth to enforce right now. They don't want to have to bring out the police department if someone doesn't, is doing that, but they also don't have any teeth right now. If someone isn't taking care of their animal, they're basically telling them to go away and leave us alone. So they would like to be able to at least have some teeth as far as making sure the animals, the dogs are fed, watered, and have provided shelters. So they've asked, I recommend that be re, readopted, and so I've made that recommendation. So the options would be to approve the ordinances. The second option would be to approve the ordinances with any amendments by the city commissioners deemed appropriate, postpone the ordinance to another date, and/or vote to deny, and the staff recommends that you approve these ordinances. So any further questions or?
Questions for Mr. Sutton.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Now we'll entertain a motion.
We have two separate ordinances here, so I'll make, I move that Mayor Longbine, we approve ordinance number 24-11220.
Second. Have a motion is second to approve ordinance number 24-11220. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Mayor Longbine.
Aye.
Ordinance carries, and that will bring us.
Mayor Longbine, I move we approve ordinance number 24-11221.
Second. Got ahead of me. Have a motion is second to approve ordinance number 24-11221. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Mayor Longbine.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And is that the end of our agenda, Nikki?
It is.
Wow. Other business. Is any item a commissioner would like to bring up? I have a couple items. A couple of weeks ago, we had discussion about water usage and the water, the new system we have available to track your water usage and sign up for alerts when you go over a certain threshold. This came about from a citizen who had a high usage due to his sprinkler system, and it generated a press release that was covered by Channel 12 News of the availability of, of these alerts. And so I would like to ask staff to prepare a tutorial and further information on how to sign up for these water usage alerts and to track. to sign up for these water usage alerts and to track your usage. What I found is it's another username and login, so it's not too hard once you know how to do it. I think Water Department could take care of that, right?
Yeah, we certainly can do some sort of a tutorial video and get that out on social media if it's not already been done. I think they've already been working on that, so we'll get something out. That's too easy.
It's really got some good features that, you know, we paid for in this package, and I'd like to see the citizens get use out of it. Also, prior, just prior to the meeting started, I was informed that the Salina BSL group had submitted their petition to the county clerk's office, and I would like to let Deputy City Manager Wood and Council Greg Bingston explain that process.
Yeah, sure. I'll just provide a brief overview. So they did provide that to the city clerk's office. The next step for us is to turn that over to the county election official. They will certify the petition and make sure that it, all the qualifications are met as far as electors from the city and the number is correct. So once we get that back, then we will bring that to the City Commission. You'll have a choice to make whether to approve the ordinance as it's written, and that's something that you certainly have the purview to do, or we could send it on to what would be a special election. It's too late in the election cycle to get that on the next regularly scheduled election, but we could choose to move that to a special election. We will provide a staff report. We've already been working on that. We anticipated that this day would come, so we'll have something ready for the City Commission at an upcoming City Commission meeting. Be happy to answer any questions, or I'm not going to go into great detail on the statutes, but I can do that if you'd like, or Greg, if you want more information.
Can you enlighten us any, Mr. Bingston?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think Mr. Wood has certainly hit the high points of the statute and the progression of events as he articulated them is correct, that your consideration, assuming certification by the county clerk of a sufficient number of signatures on the petition, that does come back to you as Mr. Wood described, and that it is your prerogative either to enact or call a, in this case, special election.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions? Bring us to Citizens' forums. If you have an item that is not on the agenda, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
Rosemary Myss, Salina, Kansas. The Granny Brigade is going to be hosting a town hall meeting with Senator Roger Marshall on Tuesday, October the 15th, at 6:00 PM at the Knights Columbus Hall at 115 North 10th Street. Food will be provided by American for Prosperity's. And the reason I'm bringing this up today is because you guys will not have another meeting before our deadline for our reservations, because our reservations have to be in by Friday, October the 11th, and they can call or message 785-819-1368, or 785-577-5918. And it is open to the public, and Mean Dean Productions will be streaming it live.
And this is our United States Senator Roger Marshall, correct?
Yes. Thank you.
There's a meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock at the Kansas Highway Patrol Center on East Iron. It's about water issues in the state of Kansas. Starts at 9:00 PM. There are more meetings being held around the state. It's about water. Maybe you ought to attend. There have been some Native American artifacts that have been discovered at Milford Lake. Now the Corps of Engineer and the Bureau of Interior is coming in. I know about this. So there's a lot of this water that's going to be looked at very hard. If they discover a Native American body down there... Shut up! So it's like the issue here east of town. You went and looked at dead, buried Native Americans as a tourist attraction? Shame on you.
Cat's out of the bag. We turned our petition in, so that's cool. So I don't get to give you that spiel. But what would happen if the ban is lifted? One, taxpayers would save potential millions, because we've talked about building a new shelter, so that would, you know, save us millions. Two, shelter workers would be relieved from the amount of work that they have to put into that, because they have to keep these dogs separate, do all those other things. That would save them a lot. The shelter would also, you know, get more revenue, because they could adopt these dogs out. And lastly, for that, our citizens will gain our freedoms to choose what dog works best for our family. For my other fellow Salinans that have either, you know, supported us or had different views, I mean, they're all welcome. We spent the last six months getting everything from everyone, from nice hand gestures with the lovely middle finger, or pats on the back, but our job was to allow the citizens to have their day. And with that, we're hoping that this will go up for a vote, but if you guys see, you know, saving $90,000 of taxpayer money, and you want to lift it, great. If not, I think the citizens should be allowed to vote on this, and hopefully it'll get passed. I just want to say that facts do trump feelings, and we have to do a lot of research, and we have done a lot of research, a lot of statistics, and we've provided that many a times. And a lot of the issues that come up with this is feelings, because again, people think, oh, if a little kid gets hurt, or if this or that. And again, the statistics don't lie. 0.00001% chance of you being attacked and killed by a dog, and that's any dog. So again, your chances are so low, and kids die more of choking on hot dogs than being attacked by a dog. We've had more kids die this year in Kansas by gunshots than dogs. We've had more accidents on motorcycles and car wrecks by dogs. So just looking at those statistics, and that was just recently this year, but I just want to say thank you for enduring us, and hopefully our colorful signs didn't ruin anybody's appetite when they were out to eat. Anyway, thank you, have a good one.
Mayor and members of the committee, my name is Midge Gridstead. I am the Kansas Director for the Humane Society of the United States. I've served this position for 14 years. HSUS wholeheartedly supports regulations for dogs and their owners, including provisions for regulating dogs who have shown themselves to be dangerous. However, restricting and regulating dog ownership by breed will not accomplish a safe and healthy community objective. It creates a false sense of security and wastes critical resources. Effective dog management has nothing to do with a breed. A breed does not dictate behavior. Laws that are applied consistently to all dog owners create standardized rules, expectations in the community, and create a safer environment. Animal control officers engage the public through intervention, providing support and information to pet owners who love their pets. Treat them humanely and give them proper care. When enforcement is consistent, agencies are able to identify and address problem situations. ACOs have more time to respond to dog bites or attack no matter what type of dog. They have more time to investigate cruelty or neglect, and more of an opportunity to educate the public on proper animal care and city regulations. Experts like the American Veterinary and Medical Association, Center of Disease Control, National Animal Control Association, the American Veterinary Society of Animal Behavior, U.S. Housing and Urban Development, Department of Justice, the American Bar Association, all agree that there is no basis in science for laws that discriminate against specific breeds, and that no breed of dog is inherently dangerous. Twenty states plus and counting have rejected breed-specific laws to the degree that they prohibit cities and counties from enacting dog law based on breeds. Several Kansas cities, 56, have repealed their breed-specific legislation without increases in bite cases or dog attacks. There's no evidence of BSL having worked in any sense, anywhere, on any level of government. Managing dog behavior and protecting public are serious responsibilities for your community officials. I propose that the city repeal the breed-specific language in the code, which will move your city toward a safer future for residents and companion animals. And I'm going to drop these off with her. They've got contact information. I was in here a little late, and I didn't want to disturb the meeting, but if you want to read and contact her, she's open to it.
Anyone else?
I'm Ken Ritz. I live in Salina, have for most of my life. A couple of things. I'm curious as to what could be done to improve the availability of information about what is going on in this building and what will be coming. I've found that when I make the rounds, and it becomes a round, that everyone, genuinely or not, suggests that there is a better place to get this information than where I am at the moment, and before you know it, you've made the loop. And I'm assuming that I'm just behind, that most of this referencing is done online now rather than in print. And if so, I would, I would think it would be a nice idea if there were some general directions available either here or... The more I think about it, the public library would seem to be a natural and ideal and appropriate location for any types of information that come through, to be available there, either online or in printed form as a reference. We certainly do that with Salina's history. Well, we're making history now. It's called current history. And where records have been kept at the point of issue, we have much better information bases than when somebody digs them out of the attic after Aunt Gertie, who lived to be 108, passes on. So why not just start immediately? And areas that I've been concerned with are focused in two, well, several directions, but the pandemic is certainly something that, that we have a long way to go yet on, and resource recovery, we've hardly begun. And that goes, certainly for me, I started in 1981. Why am I not miles ahead of everyone else? It's not been for lack of time. So anyway, calendar time, anyway. So anyhow, if there is a source, like an information person, that would maybe be doing other things that we mere mortals could just go see in order to get guidance, I...
Thank you, Mr. Ritz.
Would suggest that.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Hold on, favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will see you in two weeks.